Test, test. One, two, three. Test, 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 test. Test. Test, test, test. One, two, three. Test, 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 test.
Alrighty, let's get this meeting called to order. It is six thirty-six P M on Thursday, July seventeenth. We are here on the Special Taxing District Quarterly Town Council Workshop. Uh, let's go ahead and uh, take care of the pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Councilman Hersberg, can you lead us away?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mister Deputy Clerk, would you do the honor of calling the roll?
Absolutely. Councilmember Cuadra Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Hersberg.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Vice Mayor Moreira.
Present.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Present.
Vice Mayor, you have quorum.
Thank you Deputy Clerk. Onto the order of business. Does anyone have any deferrals, additions, or deletions uh from the order of business? Seeing none, uh, the agenda is set and we move on to public comments. Uh, Mister Deputy Clerk, would you like to read the rules?
Of course. Good evening and welcome to the workshop. If you are here and want to provide public comments, please approach the podium. State your name and address for the record. If you are participating from home via Zoom, please raise your hand by clicking on the reactions icon. Participants will be allowed to speak one at a time as the raise icon appears. We want to always stress to be respectful, no clapping or making noises while public comments are taking place. And we are here to gather your input and for the town council to make the decisions that are beneficial for the community. So again, please feel free to approach the podium and state your name and address for the record and let us have a good meeting.
Thank you Mister Deputy Clerk. First up for public comments, name and address.
Oh, there we go. Can you hear me now? Okay. Okay. This thing is a little intimidating. Okay, Irene Gutierrez, eighty twenty-five Northwest one six two Street, Miami Lake Florida three three zero one six. Anyways, I'm coming here to speak to these three items that I see here and possibly make another comment. The installation of the speed humps. Some people find it annoying, but I find, my grandson, which I brought today, lives on section one. There is a speed bump right before on the visitor lane, right before you get to the guard arm. That makes a world of a difference for you not to hit that guard arm. That is the speed bump that I think would benefit us on our side. This is my opinion. You know, I'm sure other people will find other things wrong with it because there's always somebody that finds something wrong. But I think it's a great idea to avoid costs of that breakage constantly of repairs of those guard arms. It's one deterrent. The next one is the infrared photo switch. We've been talking about this since we were in the committee stages. About having the the guards be able to go to the bathroom and have that guard arm. And I believe I spoke to you about this before. Uh, Council, uh, Vice Mayor Moreira. If they can go to the bathroom and maybe see on their phone that there is a car there, they can operate it. You know, that we do have cameras, you know, so you know, the cameras will take the plate. That will probably work better during the day than at night when we have to ask for the licenses. The next one is the windshield sticker. We need that desperately. When those guard houses were installed years ago and I was there, we had a sticker and we had a clicker. We didn't have any issues. You know, there was no lines. The residents didn't have a problem. I know that there are some residents that are complaining. I've been there and I know that the ones that live there have also been there after, you know, ten, eleven o'clock at night. There are no lines, you know, it's working smoothly. I think a sticker would quiet a lot of the resistance. Um, and I think it'll help, you know, the residents. I personally go through the guard because I want to make sure that the guard has the lights on. That's uh, an issue that I have had recently and John knows about this. I've had to, you know, call him because the new guards failed to switch the lights on and it's very dangerous, especially on our east side when you're making that left turn to go on to one six seven or on seventy-ninth, which is pitch black, you don't see anybody there. So if, you know, if at least I go through there, I remind them, hey, turn on the lights. You know, you also want to make sure that if you go through there, he's taking your tag and then opening the gate, which is the protocol, and not just pressing the button and opening the guard arm. So, you know, I wanted to mention to S F M, I never had had a hang up with S F M, but I think possibly, you know, maybe if they have a central station that you can see the employees. I don't know where the S F M, where is, oh, there you are. Hi, John, how are you? If you can, you know, monitor these people and make sure that when they have shift change or they have, you know, they're in training, they should be able to keep, you know, know where the lights are, turn them on and follow the protocol of, you know, take, go out, take the license plate, then open the the guard arm. You know, especially, you know, if they just, you know, were hired, they they should know that training. And I think that if I go through there and I remind them, it might be in a nice way. I think it'll help. Thank you very much. Okay?
Thank you, Ari. Uh, Councilmember Garcia, you're recognized.
Could you stay? I just want to ask you a couple of questions. Uh.
And while you do that, just let the record reflect Councilman Fernandez has arrived.
Yes?
As as far as the stickers. Now, I know stickers, if you live behind a gate, you get the sticker on the window. However, there are other options and, for example, and and um, um, there are certain areas that have those white key cards, right, that you can place in a little plastic sleeve with a suction cup to the window.
I don't want to.
A lot of people wants, let's say they lease a car for two years.
Yes, I'm one of them.
And you have to get a new sticker.
I had to do that.
Yeah, if you get.
The clicker is the thing, it's a little more money.
It's a, it's an.
It's a little white card.
It's a little white card.
I think the section one.
Section one has.
Yeah, my daughter has one.
It it's super fast.
Yes.
It it goes in a little plastic sleeve with a suction cup. And then if you get a new car.
All you have to do is take it out, put it on. That is a very good idea.
Is is that available uh in the other areas to have maybe perhaps one of these key cards, the white card?
I think it's.
Well, J P, yeah, yeah.
Uh, good. Can you hear me?
Yeah, instead of a sticker and and the laser reader, have the art, the card with a with a maximum uh, with a with a bigger um radius. The the white cards that we use to get in here?
I'd have to look into it further to see what's available. Uh, my recommendation, if you go with uh the stickers on vehicles, would be you'd want to change it out every every so often. Uh, Lock Lowman's H O A, for example, they change it out annually and the stickers. And for that reason is so that, you know, somebody can't just create the sticker and get access themselves.
But wouldn't it be more, um, they're already using it uh in section one, the white key cards? That it's hard to, you can't, you can't.
White key card is the system to get in. That's a, that's a clicker. That's basically their version of a clicker. It's it's a.
Sure.
It's a more uh, I don't, I don't have the the, it's it's a newer system um
Okay.
in comparison to the clicker.
Well, would be, I know, but it's, what I mean, it's been proven, right, to work, could it work here instead of stickers? I mean, stickers are are antiquated and and they're they're kind of like a pain compared to the the key card.
So you got to take into account that Miami Lake section one has two residential lanes. The reason they're able to do that is because they have a a lane that is dedicated to coming in and out. You can't do that on, for example, one sixty-eighth street in Royal Oaks or one sixty-seventh. That could work. That system that you're talking about could work in seventy-ninth avenue or a hundred and sixty-second where it's, it has a residential lane dedicated, but you're you're going to have to also consider now you're going to have to replace the existing clicker systems at both these locations. So there's going to be a cost associated with replacing those systems for this new updated system.
Okay, but currently, currently what we're talking about is an existing sticker system. Is that what we're talking about? The existing one?
No, I I think what she's referring to.
Exactly. So it's a, it's going to be a brand new system anyway, right?
No, no, we have the clickers now, right?
You have.
We have little clickers now. We just needed a decal because of the situation where a lot of these people don't want to buy the clicker. They used to furnish, they, you lived there, you remember, were you there when they first gave us the stickers?
Irene. Just, just speaking to the mic, just so that the people at home can connect.
We used to have both. We used to have a big clicker, which now it's very convenient because it's little and you can put it in your keychain. And then we had a sticker. It had a little tree, Royal Oaks, little round one, and it was great because if you were going through the nor, you know, the visitor side, you you could use a clicker if you wanted to. If you were going through the visitors, then you would have to put it on the right, right, of the windshield. That's how we used to do it. You know, and it's maybe less expensive and people.
Let me clear this up. Um, two, two of the four lanes only have one, one guard, one, one, one gate. And we've discussed this before and I agree with J P. You cannot allow a resident to have the ability to put that gate up and down because of the safety of the guards. So the sticker allows, especially at night, the sticker would allow residents to not have to, I mean, no one has to roll down their window, but to not have, the guard will just open the gate, not even take the tag.
Oh, that's right. It was back. Yes, you're right. You're right.
If they see the sticker, the gate just goes up, the tag doesn't get registered.
You're absolutely right.
There's no asking that, and we need that for two of the gates. Anyone in either either side has the ability to go through with a clicker. There's nothing wrong with the clicker system that I'm aware of.
No, there isn't. It's running very smoothly, I must say, and I have to add to that. I think that when people are intimidated by the cost maybe, and maybe a sticker would be, I don't know, a couple of bucks.
Or something.
Yeah, and maybe they would buy, you saw the noise on the chat.
Yeah, I mean, not much noise.
Resistance, so we're trying to shut that down because it's working and it's working good.
There's some homes that it's much, much, much more convenient to always use one of the two lanes that don't have a resident lane, right? So those people would want to have a sticker to this, allow them to drive through.
You're right.
Like, so that's why the sticker, and I agree, the sticker would have to be rotated every twenty-four months or every twelve months or something.
I used to have to turn mine in in pieces to get another one.
Right, you definitely want to rotate the sticker, but um, but that's why, that's what the sticker, the stickers meant just for those two would, I mean, for anybody, but really meant for the two gate guards that you can't, there is no resident lane and you can't allow anybody to control that gate. Um, so that's where, and I I mean, I don't know if we need any updates, right? Section one has like the newer system that makes more sense.
I think that's it. Any other questions?
Alright, so before we take any additional questions from the council, let me just remind everyone up here, we're still in public comments. Um, we're gonna come back to this issue during the agenda, and if we want to call up anyone and and ask questions and all that, we we can do it then. Um, but yeah, anyone else for public comments? Mister Cruz. By the way, Alexis, is there anyone online? No, thank you.
Homer Cruz, eight five one five Northwest one sixty-nine terrace. Um, quick. The, when Christopher Columbus came and we did the uh, the guardhouses back in the days, it was very simple. Sticker on the cars. We used to have it on the windshield. The guard gate, the the guard could see it and everybody can come in. End of the story. Three minutes. Spoke with John. Believe you guys have it on your agenda. It was proposed, I think. The cost of those stickers is like seventy-eight cents. Maybe we can give two per house and the other ones, we can sell them at five, make a little bit of money. So we can raise some money and keep our taxes down because uh, that's something that for five years we were able to do it. We balanced the budget. We didn't raise the taxes for five years on the special taxing district. I'm very proud of that. We were able to do it, and I think you guys can do it too. You need to balance that. Residents are not happy when you raise taxes. Starting with me. So if it ain't broke, don't fix it. Let's not try to reinvent the wheel. Cheapest way to do it is those stickers. Approve them, make them. To me, it'll make my life a lot easier because I don't have to have the guard not refusing to give him my license. They already know me, so they just open the gate and I'm in. But it'll be a lot easier for a lot of people that feel the same way that I do. And it's simple. Just let's, let's try to make that happen and have those stickers so tomorrow I can go ahead and pick up two of them and put them on my cards. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anyone else for public comments? Well, once, twice, sold, public comments is closed and we are on to staff reports, uh, starting with the various district updates. Uh, J P, is this you?
Yes, so um, I could go through them real quick. Uh, and then if you have any questions or want to uh, touch on any particular thing, we could, you know, open up for questions. Uh, lake conditions, um, during the summertime, it had the lakes, uh, Lake Patricia and Lake Hill to have seen a an increase in algae. What we've done to mitigate that and and help combat that is, uh, we've uh, increased our our cycles of maintenance from two to three. We do this annually during the summertime. And so we've, we've started uh, to implement that and we have already seen uh, the, an improvement in the lake conditions. And so we will continue to do that uh, three times a month, um, I believe until September, so. Uh, fish stocking, we are working on fish stocking at Lake Hilton, Lake Patricia. That should be coming. We should be uh, fish stocking new bass at both lakes uh, shortly in the, in the next company, coming uh, month. Um, sir, security level transition, we've already been working with uh, S F M to um, switch the levels from level two to level one, um, as um, council had approved. Um, we do not foresee any um, any issues in terms of any other communities has, as far as um, uh, guards uh, leaving because in, for the most part, it it's not going to be um, the one area where it would be most affected, effective would be Royal Oaks, but they're already getting an increase from moving from their previous contract to the new contract starting October first. So it it evens out. Um, surveillance transition uh, from live monitoring to recorded cameras, that has already been implemented. So all the cameras are recorded at all the guard houses. Uh, they have ability up to ten days uh, of recorded time. Um, but that has already been implemented. Uh, transition to night shift guards, asking for identification, that's all, as you could already see, it's, it's already been implemented. Um, that is uh, been going from, from ten P M to six A M on a nightly basis. We've received mostly positive uh, reviews on that. Um, I'm sure there's, there's going to be things that we could discuss on how to improve even further. Um, guard removals. Uh, we have um, in uh, enforced the contract and sixteen guards have been removed for, as per the contract of their, of not being able to uh, to speak English. So that has been implemented and we have seen uh, a a change in in some of the guards. Um, specifically in uh, the Royal Oaks area, there's been a a, a few changes in that area. Um, capital improvement ballots. This is more of a, a thing to bring to your attention. Uh, that we do not currently have a system in place for any capital improvements. Um, I have gone ahead and reached out to Miami Dade County to see about straw ballot, uh, pu- putting together a straw ballot system. Um, so that in in the event that we want to go that route, they do not, that's not going to be feasible for us because um, they don't, they only accept people that are have, that are um, able to vote, that they're registered for voting. And it's not based on your, where you live. And it's not based on your, where you live. So it's not, it, it's not based, I'm sorry, it's not based on homeowner, it's based on where you live. So, and, and so hypothetically, you own a home in, in Royal Oaks, but you live in somewhere else, you wouldn't be able to vote for that location, so. There are, is a system in place that I have found that is, that works with HOAs. That they have, uh, an, an HOA voting system, so I'm hoping to present something to you guys for the next council meeting, uh, for, for you guys to review. Um, but that may be the best, the best route to go for, would be something that is an HOA, um, ballot system that we could implement, that can utilize, uh, either online voting or, uh, even over the phone voting, um, for, for ballots. Locklomen guardhouse renovation. You have in front of you, uh, a list of signatures of people who have, uh, I believe, uh, a minimum of ten percent of, yeah, no, that's not it. Did you print it out by any chance for them? No, I don't think.
I don't think that we have that.
I will be sure to, uh, it's in the agenda on, on the website, but I'll, I'll be sure to, uh.
We'll, we'll take your word for it, what is it again?
We have, uh, uh, signatures, uh, ten percent of Locklomen for, to, uh, to vote, to take to vote for, uh, improvements on the, uh, Locklomen guardhouse. Um, what has been proposed? I have it here, just give me one moment. Um, the options on the scope of the renovation that they are requesting to, uh, put, put to vote are for full demolition and rebuild. Uh, renovation with no bathroom, and then the, the other option is renovation with a bathroom. There's different prices, uh, obviously depending on what is, is considered. But they have enough votes to go out for a capital improvement, uh, ballot, should you, should that, that be something that the council decides. And then, uh, lastly, uh, the STD survey res- results, uh, as you could see in, that, that is in front of you. The, uh, we had, uh, a, uh, as part of the budget letter, we sent out a survey, and we received, uh, fifty-one responses. Uh, mostly positive results, uh, you'll see that, uh, we had for, uh, lakes, uh, for the lake maintenance. We had six total responses, um, for the guardhouse, uh, districts, we had forty-four responses. We hope to improve the, the amount of responses that we get in the future. But, uh, this is a, uh, br- a, a good feedback of, of the level of service at, at the current moment.
Thank you JP, uh, I'll open it up to questions from the council.
Yes, please.
Councilmember Sanchez.
So for item G, capital improvement ballots. So what would be considered an improvement for a special taxing district besides a guard gate improvement?
Per our former councilmember, uh, Ruano, who implemented this, anything above one cent would be considered a capital improvement.
So.
Anything that's not an existing item that's already in place, so. For example, if it's just a matter of, like you had mentioned earlier, Councilmember Garcia about replacing the, the gate arm system with a new system. That's a, that would be a, a replacement of this, of, of the system, so that would not be a capital improvement.
Right.
If, if it's a, if it's something like, some of the things that are on this list, um.
The speed bumps.
The speed humps, the.
That would be a capital improvement.
That would be a capital improvement because it's not in place currently at the moment.
Okay, so new items, okay, then, next question, for the Locklomen guardhouse renovation, it would be paid through a quote-unquote special assessment to the special taxing district? Or would it be paid through the general fund of the town taxpayer? It would be through the special taxing district?
The voting system?
No, for the Locklomen guardhouse renovation.
The Locklomen guardhouse renovation would be paid through Locklomen's, uh, special taxing district.
Okay, and then the final question, for the special taxing district survey result, how was it sent out? Was it emailed, was it a mailer, how was it sent out?
It was sent out as part of the, uh, the budget letter, that was sent out to all residents, uh, all homeowners of, within the special taxing districts.
But the survey itself was part of the letter, or did it direct them to a link to fill out the survey?
It was part of, it was part of the letter, it had its own space as part of the letter that would send, uh, you to a link to fill out the survey online.
But it was a paper document where someone would have to go to a, a browser, type in the address and go from there?
Correct.
Okay, now because, I'll, I'll be honest, the numbers of, of the, uh, the turnaround seemed pretty low.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and, and ideally, the higher the number, the better.
As part of the letter, we did give the option where you could request to receive a, a letter, um, to be mailed to you.
Okay.
A, a, a written, uh, paper letter.
Yeah.
Or you could, uh, with a QR code, fill it out, and there was also a link to, to fill it out as well.
How often are we doing the surveys?
We do it annually as part of the budget letter, every year.
Okay, and then i- in retrospect, if for next year, I would add that QR code, instead of having someone type in a physical, just scan the QR code and have it populate. Maybe the turnout will be a little higher.
Well, that's what we did in this case and.
Oh, there was a QR code.
There was a QR.
Oh, good, okay. Okay, all right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Councilmember Hersberg?
Thank you, um, okay, first thing, the, the capital improvements. Where the definition of capital improvements that, I remember that discussion, was that put into a new ordinance? Or how did we, in the past, where, how did that definition get, you know, basically made?
I wanna say that it was in, uh.
In budget, in the budget discussion?
November, during, it was during a budget letter, bu- budget hearing, um, in twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
It was decided, uh, it was voted on the dais during that, uh, I, I can't tell you right now off the top of my head if it was, if it was put into an ordinance.
So are you saying that if we wanna install speed bumps or put in the screens and things like that, that we have to go to vote?
As it was decided by council, yes.
Okay, well, we can look into that, um, and then.
Just to clarify that?
I don't know if you have any knowledge on that history.
Know if it goes fa- that far back, uh, Councilwoman Ruano posed that as a friendly amendment, I believe, to my, uh, ordinance on what was then the NSDs, now the, the special taxing districts. Um, so I believe, and, and I could be wrong on this, but I believe if you go to the, uh, the NSD ordinance, to the STD ordinance, uh, I think it, it is actually spelled out there, the things that the, the special taxing districts can and cannot do, uh, without, without a vote. We tried to move away from that ambiguity of, of what is allowed and what is not, and to, to keep it very, uh, you know, put it in very simple terms, it was, you know, things that are normal, like, uh, cleaning, you know, they're, they're directly related to the running of something like a guardhouse, like cleaning. Like that's, you don't need, you know, the resident's permission to, to clean the guardhouse. But now you wanna add satellite TV to it, that's not necessarily something that's directly related to it. And yeah, if we're gonna, because this is a special taxing district that creates a fixed, um, non-advalorem assessment against the property, they should have a say in whether or not it gets added to their tax bill or not. Uh, that was basically the discussion, it's stated better, I believe, in the ordinance.
Yes, I'll, I'll pull up the ordinance, my only concern is, you know, there's cost-saving measures that we can take and, and base, I mean, it goes against some of the discussions we've had before, that we can't take these cost-saving measures because then we have to spend thousands of dollars to go to vote to save residents' money, right, so. I'll, I'll take a look at that language, I was, I think we had some confusion where that originally came from. So, and I, I think you're right, I think it might be in, it should be in there, I'll look at that and then we can maybe revisit what, what needs to be done there. The Locklomen ballots, how many ballots did you get, like, it, it should be based off of properties, right, not, not voters, right?
Off, off property homeowners.
Right, okay, and you got, so how, okay, Locklomen has what, like a hundred and some, how many?
A hundred and eighty?
Okay, so you.
Hundred and eighty-eight.
And you, we only had that ten percent, okay. But the ten, what's your idea, is it to give them options, because the, the, what they sign says, we wanna be given the option, because no one really said, we, in the, in those signed ballots, this is what we want.
Come on, come on up to the mic.
The whole idea is, there is gonna be work that needs to be done on that guardhouse, regardless of what happens, he's gonna have to do something. And we're at a point now, you got the golf course doing its thing, and the building is old. You don't want somebody coming back and saying, well, why didn't we just think of, uh, rebuilding the whole thing? What the heck, I mean, I'll have to answer for it, you'll have to answer for it, well, we voted on it, and we just decided to, you know, glue and paste it together, or we agreed that we're gonna tear it down, and that's what the voters wanted. But we, I, I stopped at ten percent, takes a lot of work to go out there and ask people to, so when I got my ten percent, I finished, but it's just to give them the option. Yay or nay, we want it, we don't?
Before you go, Patrick, just, after the last quarterly meeting, were you contacted by, by the, the, the town attorney by any chance?
No.
No, okay, cuz, cuz I had reached out to him after the meeting, cuz number one, I love that you guys took initiative and utilized the, the, the brand-new ordinance to, to get the, to achieve the change that you guys wanted to see, I love that. Um, and I was very excited for it, but then, wh- what Councilman Hersberg just brought up, the way in which the petition was written as providing those options, I don't know, there, there, there was there no change.
Yep.
A minor change, and then a complete change.
Right.
So I don't know if those signatures are for no change or a complete change. And, and, and that's where it becomes a little difficult, uh, to, to allow it to pass on to the next step. Um, and so I had actually asked the town attorney to reach out to you, so I wish he would have, but, um, in any case, uh, to, and I hate to send you back out there, um, but, you know, we, we wanna make sure that the ch- the changes that we're doing, since it does affect the tax bill directly, as, as I mentioned before, that it is the will of the people. Um, so, uh, I, I had asked him to have, have you go out and get some clarification. Which, which of these are asking for a complete change, which of them are asking for, uh.
Yeah, I, I don't know that information, the, the question was posed, hey, are you, you wanna learn more?
Yeah.
When they learn that the guardhouse is gonna cost two hundred and fifty thousand, they may say no. If it only costs a hundred and twenty-five, they may say yes. Um, you know, beautify the thing, go above and beyond the outdated wear, um, roof, and maybe let's put in some, you know, nice windows or, the electrical's gotta be dealt with, so let's just enhance this thing and beautify it, or don't do nothing at all, which means John got them, he's gonna do what he needs to do to, to right that building.
What I think is just that, generally speaking, let the government handle it is a really bad way of going about this.
But at my understanding, that's my only choice.
Yeah, this is a beautiful, uh, opportunity for the residents to be the ones that make the choice. Don't put it in our hands, I don't think any of us live in Locklomen, uh, don't put it in our hands, you guys take the reins. You tell us, do you wanna spend the two fifty to completely, you know, knock it down and build it back up, or maybe a, a, a more modest amount to, to renovate?
Yeah.
And, and then you get me, you know, a ten percent vote on one of those options, and that way, we're not substituting and saying, hey, oh, we're, we know what's best for you, and in reality, you know what's best for you.
Well, yeah, and I don't even know what it would cost to, you know, do a total replacement, plus I have to do it at your standards. Which, uh, you know, or to beautify it, we probably even have some code issues that.
That's a block structure, right, that's, that's cinder block?
It is a cinder block.
Okay.
Tile roof, um, non-hurricane-proof windows, not that we expect them to sit through.
But the structure's sound, you would say?
Um, I guess, it didn't fall over yet. I mean.
And it was, cuz it was built when, in, uh, in the eighties?
Probably eighty-two, sixties, yeah, probably.
Well, then that, that'll last forever. Okay, so is this, is there a problem with the size, has, has, has there been a problem with your, um, your, your, your guard saying that the size is too small, or the bathroom, there's an issue with the bathrooms, or anything like that? You come to the front. He's got a mic there.
We were granted permission to use the golf course, and, um, hopefully we respect that, and our guards will always be able to use it, but you don't know what day that's gonna.
Okay.
Thank you.
So there's no bathroom in, in that, okay. And they removed the bathroom that was there next, across the street, right, within renovation?
Uh, it, it is there.
It is there.
They're fixing it up, doing whatever might be done by now.
Yeah, of course. Okay.
And the officers find themselves challenged here and there to, to use the bathroom because of that very same reason.
Okay.
So sometimes what we need to do is have the officers use an outside bathroom. Which, again, it's, it's, it's a challenge in order to have service continuity.
Yes, sir. We did have an agreement with, uh, the Grams during the time that they were renovating the, the, the bathroom at the golf course to utilize the hotel, so the guards were able to utilize the hotel nearby. That's pretty far to go to go to the bathroom.
I agree.
They would have to drive out, but they would have to go to.
Random question here, but I'm not visualizing the Locklomen entrance right now, is there a, a parking spot for the guards?
Yes.
There is? Oh, okay. Okay, so, so they, I guess, hop into their car and go all the way to the guard, to the hotel to use the bathroom?
So what happens is when somebody, one, one of the two guards has to use the bathroom, they will take the, uh, the security vehicle, the security rover.
Oh, that's right, just, the Locklomen has the, the rover, okay, thank you.
One more question, so you, your, your idea is to expand, not the width, but the length of the, of it, so, or move it more toward the, uh. Okay. Okay.
I don't like it, but that's just me. I'm not gonna, you know, I'm not pushing the residents one way or another, I want them to have the option. So that, uh, when I'm at a social event, it's not.
So what are we looking at, like four hundred square feet, five hundred square feet, very small?
I really don't know what the specs are for something like that.
Smaller, a lot smaller?
It's eight foot by eight foot.
Eight foot by, okay, okay.
And then they got a desk in there.
I'm sorry, I went crazy.
Refrigerator for their, um, their lunch, we got some, um, electrical stuff in there for monitoring.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Just real quick, and I think that I, I, I agree with, with, uh, Vice Mayor's sentiment that we, we wanna do whatever it is that Locklomen residents want. I do believe that, knowing that there's no bathroom there, I think that the logical route is to rebuild it, but I won't do, unless the residents want it.
Yeah, well, we're, we're not asking you to make that decision, we're, we're gonna make the decision whether we want that bathroom at the price, cuz one, you gotta get the sewage to that point. Uh, you gotta, whatever else is, you know, due by, uh, code, so it may not, we may not find it feasible to wanna do it. But at least, you know, I'm talking to what, a few here and there, but I want a hundred and eighty-eight people to have a say in this. I want the bathroom, I want this for our guards. Okay, well, the majority decided, uh, however, you know, that's what I'm looking at.
Did you have some?
I got a feeling it won't, but you gotta find all that stuff.
And I understand what you're trying to do with the ballot and saying, well, here are your options. And I like that, I just don't know if it's within the ordinance, I, I guess legally, I think we have an issue. We're saying, okay, let's give them a ballot that says four different options, I don't think our ordinance, I think there's a.
Yeah, I want you to do it according to the ordinance, that's just something I came up with.
I don't even think it's necessarily against the ordinance, to be honest with you, the problem that it has is the, the next step, step two, after they collect their ten, is it comes to us, for us to approve it, to now go to a ballot. And, but when we send it back, we're sending it back as a concrete option, meaning we're going to replace our, uh, opinion over theirs. Uh, you're coming to us with this, hey, we want some form of change, but then, cool, here's your change.
Yeah.
That, that, so, so that's what, where my fear is that it may come back to you as a no change, or a complete overhaul, when really what the people wanted was, hey, I had a bathroom in there, make it a little bigger, s- push it back from, from the, from the road within the existing structure, which is gonna cost a lot less. Um, and not only do we now look like bullies imposing a full-fledged, uh, renovation, but also, uh, you know, the, the people's opinion gets trumped over ours, uh, over yours. Um, and so, um, my suggestion is to just go back and take that exact same, uh, survey that you did and just make two separate versions of it. One is for the, the, the ren- the renovation minor change, and the other one is for the full redo. One is for the, the, the renov, the renovation minor change and the other one is for the full redo.
Yeah.
And, and you go to the same people you spoke to, hey, which one were you for? Uh, or which one did you want? Cool, here's, here it is for that one. Here it is for the other one. Whichever one gets to 10%, that's the one that, that you present.
But would you, do you think we would be allowed to, uh, process a ballot that says, gives them options or no? That's my question. I, I.
We can, cuz we're not processing a ballot. We're processing a petition.
Right.
And we are approving something to go to a ballot. So when we send it back is when it has to be.
One, one or other.
One option.
That, that's what I think too.
And so, and so when we do.
I would love to give up multiple options, but I believe that you're, I, I agree with you.
Also what I'm hoping to get from you is if we do this thing brand new, I don't know. I played with tonka trucks when I was nine years old. That's the most I know about construction. But, um, hey, a bathroom's gonna cost ninety. You, you know, through the town, because, you know, it's an NSD and eventually you're the ones that are gonna build it. So it has to be built by the, the specs and your qualified contractors. You know, is it sixty thousand? I, I, I can't even guess that. So when I'm talking to the residents, they're using their figures. I'm throwing it out there, guestimates and stuff. So I was looking for more concrete.
JP, is that something that you could help with in terms of maybe just from our experience, always throwing out things to contract and to bid, uh, that we could at least give them ballpark figures?
We, we did give it ballpark figures. They're, they're in the Exhibit C, the fi, the last page, page four.
Okay.
Those ballpark figures were me working with the HOA to give them the, the ballpark figures that they were looking for. Um, when discussing this.
But I'll, I'll work with those numbers then.
Yeah. The, the issue is that I can't get you an exact number.
No, of course.
Without spending.
Yeah, you would need to spend money to, to send it out to bid and.
Exactly. So, um, so that was the best that I could do is get some ballpark figures from, uh, a couple different, uh, con, co, construction vendors that, uh, I spoke with. And I was, I presented to them and, and then they went out.
Does this number also include, uh, well, that's a great question. Um, but does it also include design and planning or just construction?
That, that is the ballpark figure for just construction.
Okay. Uh, so, so you also have to fact, factor in, what, what's the rule of thumb, like 10%? Uh, on top of this?
Correct.
For, for design and planning? And then, Councilman Garcia just said something to me that was a really good point, which is whether this width bathroom renovation number considers where the nearest plumbing or sewage connection is, cuz.
Correct. That's another thing we'd have to do, uh, uh, figure out where, where it is and that's, that's another call.
But yeah, I, I would say you could start here. If you wanna tack on a 10% to, to both of these.
Okay.
To, to, to all of these. Um, and I wouldn't necessarily present the, uh, no, um, the no change option because the no change option is simply, don't sign either, right?
Yeah.
Um, but give them, i, i, you know, if you wanna do it all three ways, I mean, I, I think it's pointless to do a renovation and not add a bathroom. Uh, but that's just me. Maybe your residents think differently. Uh, but yeah, I, I, make sure you come back to us with something that tells us, hey, this is the one that we want. Any other comments from the council? Uh, Councilman Quadra Garcia.
Through, uh, Mr. Mayor. Mister.
Councilman Quadra Garcia.
You know, such an important day like today, people complain so much about these NS, uh, these guard gates and so forth and so on. I thought that today we were gonna have this whole entire chamber full of people and have the, the news here. And look, we have basically nobody here to talk about this so important issue. But I'm gonna take the time to, um, talk about my section. Even though I'm a councilman at large, I pretty much represent the town, the complete town. But I'm gonna talk about my section, alright? So basically I'm confused and I'd like somebody to de-confuse me. Now that we have SFM here, does the level of guards, is it the more superior as the numbers go up? Is the level one a more superior or the level two a more superior or the level three? Can?
Councilman, Councilman Quadra Garcia, we, we already made that decision though. We already reverted down to the level one.
Okay, so great. So basically if we've, if we reversed it to a level one, why am I looking at paying more than a thousand dollars on my, on my trim, on, on my trim notice? Cuz is that, is that us? Is that gonna be us? So if we, if we add all this stuff, this is where I'm, no? Okay. Maybe I need to take sidebar and then get educated.
We can come back to you at, at any time. Anyone else, uh, questions on the staff report, Section 5A of the agenda?
I have just one more question.
Okay.
Okay, with regards to funding the project, because obviously the Lock Loman Special Toting District is not gonna come out of pocket with the two hundred, just on the high end of two hundred thousand divided by how many homes was it?
Hundred and eighty-eight.
A hundred and eighty-eight. So would it be funded through a bond, through a loan, and then they pay it back at what term?
We would increase for one year. We would increase the assessment rate to make up for the amount.
So it would be paid off in one year?
For one year. So if, so a construction wouldn't begin until not the year that it was voted on, but the, the year after that.
So it would be used with current funds, not debt funds?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, um, I'll, I'll just go last. Um, so a couple of questions on, as the, a newly minted resident of, uh, Lake Hilda, uh, the, the fish stocking, um, as a fisherman and also a concerned resident. Um, are, you said bass. Are, are we doing other species of fish or just bass? And if so, which species of bass?
I'd have to get back to you on the species of bass. Historically, we've always done, uh, bass just because a lot of the other fish that don't, they don't make it. Uh, especially when, when you have bass, uh, in the, uh, in the lake. So, um, that's, that's really the reason for it. But I could get back to you. I, I wanna say Titan bass, but I, I have to.
The, the chemicals that are put into the, the lake, are they more intended to? What is the, the main goal with the chemicals? Is it to prevent mosquitoes, to prevent algae growth? Or to just maintain the necessary level of, of pH or, or other things? What, what's the main reason for it?
The main reason is, is, so it's, it's to maintain the algae growth that comes in, the pH levels as well. But, uh, it does not do, is it's not meant for you to be able to go in the lake and swim in the lake.
Okay. And then, um, with regard to the blah blah blah. Well, no, the other question was gonna be about the capital improvement balance, but it was already, uh, answered a little while ago. But, um, the reason I brought up the question on, on the lake chemicals and, and the stockings, cuz I, I did have a conversation with one of my new neighbors, uh, about how it used to be done a little differently. There used to be more grass in the bed that now just dies off. Um, the, that deep blue hue that the water has now, it's a little unnatural. Um, and I'm just wondering if there's a little bit more, um, organic, I guess, ways of doing, more natural ways of, of keeping the lake up, you know, up to par or if this is simply the best method?
The best system in place for what you're asking for would be an aeration system.
Okay. And it doesn't have to be a fountain. It could just be an, uh, an aerator at the bottom, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Nothing else on this part of the agenda? We'll move on to potential and, oh, come on up. No worries. Uh, name and address for the record, please.
Antonio Crawford, seventy-nine, twenty-one Northwest, one sixty-seven Terrace. Is the traffic street. I just want to make sure, just to know if you are, if you are planning to increase the property taxes due to what he was talking about just a few minutes ago or not? Because you said that you, it went back to guard one, level one, the classification. Does that mean that you are not increasing the property taxes? Property taxes will stay the same?
Remind me your address one more time?
Seventy-nine, twenty-one.
Royal Oaks East?
Yes.
Um, JP, where did that one land as of the last, uh, proposed budget?
I don't have the assessment rates in front of me. I can pull it up, uh, if you give me a few minutes. But, um, I can say that the, uh, the, uh,
No.
Contingency reserve was increased to 10% in.
Increased.
The contingency reserve.
Yeah, so, so actually, believe it or not, with the savings, um, what we did is we increased the contingency reserve to where it needed to be. And then I still think that there was an assessment reduction?
Right. So, well, on Royal Oaks, they had an older contract with the security provider. That contract expired. So we had very good rates that were contracted five years ago. And we agree, we all, we voted to piggyback onto the Section 1 contract, which obviously has higher rates because that contract is newer. So the reason why the rates on Royal Oaks, um, west, the west side are actually going up pretty significantly because of that contract increase. On the east side, I think it went up a little bit, but not as much. We, we're trying to save money on reducing the guard level, which I, I was very big proponent. I think the guard level service is exactly the same and we're paying less for it. Um, and we, but we did increase the contingency. We're going to discuss that budget. We have the opportunity to try to decrease the contingency or maybe look at other improvements. But my understanding is Royal Oaks generally will be going up, not as much on the east side as the west side because of the new contract. Because we, that contract expired and labor's gone up and.
How long have the other contract?
The contracts are for five years, usually. Yeah.
So we didn't have any increase through that period?
I mean, yeah. I, I live on Royal Oaks West, uh, and I never saw an increase for as long as I lived. Actually, the first year I was there, it went down. Uh, so yeah, the increase has been very minimal or, or zero, or none for, for quite some time. But now with a new contract.
And in order to get the new contract, we put the bid out there, so.
So no, that's what we did not do. We took the contract that we have in Section 1, a different district, cuz that contract I think has two years left, JP. Uh, so our, right?
Twenty-seven.
Yeah, so that contract ends in twenty-twenty-seven. The security company allowed us to use those terms for, for these two gate guards. We could go out to bid. It was staff's position that a contract that was given to us three years ago is going to have lower rates than anything we would bid now, but we could, we could revisit that. I mean, at some point, the contracts go out to bid, right?
Yes.
I mean, I don't know if JP wants to add a little bit more in that.
I'll also say that, um, to answer your original question of whether the things that we were just talking about a moment ago are gonna affect it, those things that we were talking about, those capital improvements, before they ever touch your tax bill, they have to go to a ballot, meaning you guys would actually vote to approve or not approve that. So the only way that those capital projects, like a renovation of a guardhouse or something like that would ever hit your budget is the voters who live in that community vote to approve it. Otherwise, it won't go on there. Uh, JP?
So with lowering from level one to level two, the budgets rates for Miami Lake Section 1 went from three hundred and forty dollars and ninety-eight cents to three hundred and five. So savings there. Uh, Lock Loman stayed the same, but Lock Loman is not part of that decision. They still have their regular level two security guards. Um, Royal Oaks Section 1 is the only one that saw an increase, which is due to the, to the contract. Um, they went from seven fifty-six to eight fifty-three, an increase of ninety-seven dollars. Royal Oaks East went from eight twenty-five. They stayed the same, eight twenty-five to eight twenty-five. And, yeah, Lake Bridgerton, Lake Hilda are not part of it.
I will bring the message to my neighbors, cuz they wanted to know as well.
Perfect, thank you. That's what we need. Anyone else, uh, public comments at this stage since, uh, we kinda hit a few points? Seeing none, I'll clo, go ahead and close public comments. And, uh, sorry, Councilman Sanchez, you had something that you wanted to bring up? One second. One second.
Yeah, I had pulled up the agenda, the agenda from the June meeting and that's exactly the numbers that I was looking at. That the numbers for, uh, for sec, for the east, Royal Oaks East was eight twenty-five because we rolled it back from a level two to a level one. Level two is higher than a level one. I believe level two is, um, former military, college degrees, bilingual, things like that. Level one is very basic, right? So we rolled it back to a level one. Um, and that kept the cost the same. So you are not being affected by any raises. And the contract here, the first one was twenty-three to twenty-four, and then there's two years, one by one. So it's three plus one plus one. I, but you're not being changed whatsoever.
Councilman Quadra Garcia.
Mister Clerk, uh, Mister Mayor, uh, Mister Vice Mayor, just wanted to find out if we have anybody online? On Zoom?
There are no public comments online. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Quadra Garcia, and thank you, De, Mister Deputy Clerk. Uh, let's go ahead and move on to, uh, potential enhancements. Uh, JP, are you taking this? Make sure you're using the mic.
So potential enhancements, there's, uh, a couple of things that we've discussed in, especially in the previous meeting that was brought up. Um, so I have them listed here. If you'd like to deep into, dive into any of these, uh, I'd be happy to take any questions. Um, it's really, uh, whatever you guys would like to talk about further.
I'll, I'll, I'll just start off, uh, by asking that very first item, the ID check at Miami Lake Section 1. Um, I know that the council already approved that. Um, have we implemented it yet?
ID check at Miami Lake Section 1 has not been implemented yet. I know that what was decided at the meeting was you were gonna discuss it further at this meeting. So nothing has been, been finalized on that.
Is that, is that what we decided or do we, I think we just had to move forward with it, no?
It has to come back. It has to come back as.
As a resolution. Yeah, so we'll implement it at the ice. I mean, I think we wanted to see if anyone came up screaming saying no.
That, that is correct. That's exactly what was said.
To get feedback, uh, today.
That, you're right.
But regardless, it, it wouldn't be implemented until a resolution is.
Right.
That's right. That's exactly what I said, in case anyone wanted to come back screaming. Uh, so, perfect. So, so. But if it's on track, logistically speaking, i- if it does pass, that's something that you can implement right away like we did in Royal Oaks?
We would handle it the same way we did with Royal Oaks East, where we would give a notice in advance, at least thirty days in advance to notify all the residents that this is going to be taking place. We'll do that by putting out a, a mailer to all residents, uh, to all homeowners and putting out a sign or, or something like that, uh, out. So people are aware. We'll also put a social media campaign and, uh, and on the town's website as well.
Before I turn it over to my colleagues on any additional questions, I did forget, uh, I should've done this earlier, but I did wanna thank, uh, former councilwoman Marilyn Ruano for being here. Uh, thank you so much. I always like calling out our former elected officials when, when they're here. So thank you so much for your presence and your continued dedication to our communities. Uh, with that, anyone have any comments, questions on the, uh, potential enhancements? Councilman Quadra, uh, Hersberg.
Thank you. So, uh, and for discussion mostly between us and, and I think we gotta, I gotta, we gotta look back at the ordinance. For example, something like, um, infrared photo switch system for the visitor gates. Do we believe that needs to be a capital improvement or that's just an improvement of an existing, um, item, right? Uh, insane with, I, there's a few easy things that I think we could fix without increasing the current rates by reducing the contingencies when we get to budget. Uh, that's my idea. I think the contingencies are too high and we can provide the savings or we can make some meaningful changes. Um, the infrared photo switch system for visitor gates makes a lot of sense because right now, when the guard is not there, bathroom break, whatever, the, the gate is just up. The idea is that the gate won't just be an open entrance. It, it goes down, but the guard can flip a switch that when a car approaches, the car has to stop, picture's taken by, you know, the LPRs, whatever we have there. And then the car goes through. It will be automatic. There's no guard. But it's better than just having the gate just wide open. Um, that's something I think it's, it's a common sense improvement to make. Uh, the estimates are there. Uh, that could be made within reducing the contingencies. I don't see why we need a 10% contingency on these, on these budgets and then in the future, reducing those contingencies will then lower the tax bill. Um, out of these things here, I feel like that if, if we're going, if, if the ordinance reads that way, I feel like that might be the only improvement we can make potentially. Uh, or, and of course windshield stickers. I think that's common sense for, for us to create those for, for the tax and districts as well.
The chair?
Councilman Fernandez.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. Like, I, I would consider, um, the awnings as something that's, that should be. I, I don't know if that would be a capital improvement, where the guards would have coverage from, from sun to do their job, something that we created to, for our security, you know, the, the, the districts were created for security guards, but in that, in that of itself, they may need, I, I mean, you can make an argument, I would be one that would be okay with, you know, spending the money on that, but I won't make the decision unless the rest of my, you know, the residents in, in my district would agree with me, but, um, I'm just wondering if, if we would need to go out and ask for a capital improvement, um, ballot for that, or something like that.
I believe I actually had this discussion with JP a, a while back, and the overall discussion was that that was something inherent to a guardhouse, uh, that really wasn't included for whatever reason, but they're outside ninety percent of the day. Correct me if I'm wrong, they're outside most of the day, um, that is brutal to be out there, and so, I, I've always looked at it from that frame. Is it something that is inherent to the operations of the items that were approved in the original enacting ordinance? Uh, and that enacting ordinance says that there's going to be a guardhouse with an unarmed, one unarmed guard, depending on which, uh, special taxing district you're, you're referring to. It, I, i- i- it, in my opinion, it, it is part of a guardhouse, just like I said, cleaning, that, that we're going to have janitorial services, that's not stated in the, in the ordinance, but it's assumed. Likewise, an awning, so that they're not frying themselves, uh, you know, outside the entire day, or getting drenched in rain, uh, I think is something that's part of having a guardhouse, so, a- at least that's the discussion that I think you and I had a while back about this. Um, so, I, I would agree with you, I don't think that that itself needs to go out there. Um, and, and generally speaking, that's what, in, not to take this into the legal realm, but in the legal realm, a awning would be a fixture. Where it's not a capital improvement in that sense. Um, I'll ask you, Councilwoman Ruano, if you wanted to come to the mic, because you were a big part of this, um, if you wanted to give your opinion on it.
Good evening, everyone, Marilyn Ruano, one-five-five-one-five, Northwest Eighty-third Avenue, that sounds odd to me. Thank you, guys, so much for the service that you are, that you are performing. Um, when we had this discussion a while back, we did discuss about what the difference was with the capital improvement, or what we call a repair or maintenance item. So, anything that breaks, whether it's large or small, that needs to be brought back to its original condition, is a repair. So, even if you, if a hurricane comes and knocks down the entire roof, even though it's a very expensive item, you're bringing it back to its original condition, it is considered a repair and not a capital improvement. Anything that you are adding on to the property can either be a fixture or a capital improvement, depending on the cost of the item. But originally, what we had discussed was that anything that would be added on, that the residents would have to pay for, they should have a voice, and they should have a say, but that's kind of how we delineated what was regular maintenance and repair versus something that you're installing that is new, that has not existed there before. So, as far as the awning conversation, I do agree that the guards, it's difficult to, to be in the sun, however, they have been in the sun for thirty-plus years, however many years these guard gates have been there, so I do believe that an awning, at least for me, in my opinion, it would be something that is an addition to the property, that should be considered as an improvement and not, and not a repair.
With respect to that, as someone who's, was the original proponent of that, uh, I'm curious to see your opinion on an amendment to that rule, where rather than make it a penny, it's the price of sending it out to a ballot, because I do agree with him, I do agree with Councilmember Hersberg, it, that it does seem wasteful to, over a minute item, send something out to ballot, we're spending more on the ballot than on the item.
I agree.
Um, if, if that ordinance was, uh, amended to allow it, instead of being a penny, to being the cost of sending it out to ballot, which is, what, uh, how much does it cost to send something out to ballot? A couple thousand?
It would be something like a couple thousand.
Okay, more?
No, because you're, you're considering.
You're, you're thinking of like a solo election, like just for that, no, that's not, we're talking about putting it on a ballot, um, and the next available ballot.
Well, tha- that's my, I have a question for, thank you for coming, Mr.
Well, just to clarify. Just, just to clarify one thing, um, we would not be able to do a special election through Miami Dade County. It would not work for what we're looking to do, so it would have to be some oth- other mechanism, whether it's an, an HOA voting process, which in order to do, and I have gotten a quote already on one before, uh, I'm still reviewing other options, wanted to present to you first before bringing something else.
So, that's, that's my concern, and some work for you to do when we, we're, you're got some work from, from our issues here, but, um.
Always happy to get work from you guys.
I know, um, would, these, these ordinances and, and any voting would be property owners, not, not, um, not exact, not voters, right?
So, when we're talking about these, uh, special taxing districts, right? Al- always remember, and I've always said it, these ordinances are yours, you know, how do you change an ordinance to readings? It, it depends on how you want to regulate it, um, if you want to extend and expand the amount that you're taxing, it's always advisable that you a- allow the special taxing districts to be able to, to vote on them, right? Now, if what you're, you're asking about is, you know, on things that, going to the vice mayor's point, are, you know, what are within the ordinance, right, so you're not expanding the, the ordinance itself, you're, you're within the ordinance, but you're making, to, uh, the councilwoman's point, uh, what are capital improvements, right? A- a- anything can be considered a capital improvement, an awning, uh, uh, you know, adding more flowers, whatever you want to define as a capital improvement. Um, then how you are going to get the input from the residents is, is up to you. Uh, there's many ways you can do it, you can do it electronically, you can do it paper ballot, you can do it door-to-door, you can do it an informal, uh, you know, uh, assessment, you know, survey, uh, ser- monkey survey, you know, it, it depends on how you want to do that, and that's really the prerogative of this board, on how you, at the end of the day, want to get the feedback from your constituents as to their willingness, uh, to have that capital improvement.
Right, so, uh, my question is then, uh, the feedback is from, obviously, again, the property owners, not the registered voters, right? I mean, most of them are, most of the people that own property there are also registered voters, there's plenty of people that don't.
Does it exclude tenants?
No, it depends. At the end, and that's why I said, you know, how do you change an ordinance, back to what I first said.
So, you're saying that, you're saying the, the voting system we're cre- that's created, or is just a, basically a way for us to decide whether yes or no, where there's no legality of, of the specific procedure, and then we're just go change, we would just do it in, in a two-reading ordinance?
Where I would urge that you, you would take it to the voters, but then it would be in a formal voting process, right? Is if you want to change, you know, materially, sub- substantively, what is the ordinance that's in place right now? Uh, for instance, if the ordinance says that you have a sentinel guard gate, and you want to add to two sentinel guard gates, right? Take it back to the voters, that's, that's substantial.
But again, that taking it back to the voters, is it the, through the Miami Dade Elections Department? Or is that the HOA style of voting where tenants are excluded?
So, if you're talking about changing the ordinance itself and expanding the scope, right, where you're going to increase, uh, the, the, the special assessment, because you're increasing the service, then yes, through the Miami Dade County Elections Department, it's a formal election. That, that's how we do it, but now, if you're talking about it's, it's within the scope, but you want to, you know, add, you know, more flowers, you, you want to incre- put a canopy, you want to improve the guard gate, it's all within the scope, i- it's a capital improvement, but it's within the scope of the ordinance, then it's up to you to decide how you want to come to that decision, if, if you wish to have the input of the residents through an informal, uh, ass- assessment, election, whatever you want to call it, you could survey, you can do that.
If I make, if I can leave you with just one final thought, um, the reason why we made it as little as a penny is because of the pushback that we received about very, very small items that may be miniscule monetarily, but they impact the everyday use of the guard gate. So, because we couldn't put a, a dollar value on what would be a capital improvement, we considered that any change would be a capital improvement, because it, that change would affect the lives of everyone that uses that guard gate, and they should have the right to vote on it, not because it's going to be materially affecting their budget, but because it is, um, a, a change to the structure or the operation of the guard gate.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruano, uh, Councilman Sanchez.
Something I would propose is the same way that right now, for example, the town manager has authorization to approve projects beneath a certain amount, anything above that has to come before us, is that we introduce an ordinance to the residents of the special taxing districts individually, so, for example, Lock Lomond, if it's an amount under three thousand dollars, we wouldn't have to send it out to a ballot, we could decide it among ourselves, but anything over three thousand dollars, we would send it out for them to, to have an election on it, that way it's not, we're not going down to the minute granular effect, but having individual amounts that we have, without having to go to the residents, say, we have the clearance to be able to vote on this without having the, the ballot.
Through the chair.
One, one second, uh, just to get this in, uh, because I think it'll nip it at the bud, is the, the problem with that is if this was the Lock Lomond HOA as an example, absolutely, absolutely, they have every power to do that. But this is a special taxing district, which is also basically a special purpose vehicle, it is very contained within its ordinance to do a very specific job.
Right.
And it is meant to be difficult to change, it is meant to require a lot of thought, and, you know, the, the collecting of people's opinions before any change is made, because, like I said, it changes their tax bill directly. Regardless of whether the, the value of their home goes up or down, they're getting billed that amount, because it's a fixed expense like, like the trash bill. Um, so, for that reason, having a discretionary spending is something that would be very troubling to the members of the STD, because it's like, what are we spending it on? Um, and it's like the councilwoman said, those little things, they add up real quick. Essentially, what you'd need to do, and, and I'm not saying you can't do it, but, but what, what you would need to do is create a new line item within the budget of these, um, STDs, which is just a discretionary spending line item, that is where we can take from, to do discretionary things underneath that threshold. Uh, like, they would need to be done that way, where still, they are approving that change to the budget, because it is still a significant change. Um, but again, just keep in mind, HOAs, because that's the problem, that these STDs do get mistaken for HOAs, and they're not. HOAs have almost unlimited power within their communities, they can do so much within their communities.
Right.
Um, STDs do not, they're, they're, they're meant to just do their one job. Um, so, I just wanted to get that in there, uh, Councilman Garcia, you got something on?
I'm just, um, just asking about the contingency, how much that part of, for example, for this specific, is there a, what was, what's a contingency? Does it, i- does it have a contingency, I mean, it does, but how much is in it, is what I'm trying to ask, for this, for this particular?
So, the contingencies are currently, as it stands, I, I believe, and I'd have to double check, but I believe they're all at ten percent, which is the maximum that they can be.
Okay, yeah, they're at ten percent, but.
No more than ten percent re- re- reserve of the annual operating.
Yeah, a do- a dollar amount, like, what, what is available, like, you know?
I think he's asking how much is accumulated over the years.
Over the years in that contingency right now.
Contingencies.
For that, for this particular.
If you told me right now that one of these STDs has five hundred thousand dollars i- in its contingency account, then you know what? Yeah, absolutely, let's reduce it for a, a year to, to not have to, you know, raise, raise their, their taxes, and yet be able to get them, uh, better services, but I highly doubt that they're at five hundred thousand, please tell me that they're not.
Uh, I'll give you an example, Miami Lake section one's current contingency is set at twenty-six thousands.
Okay. Section one, is that forty-five thousand? Eight.
Okay. Answer your question?
Yeah, I just want, and, and, okay, so we have it at ten, they have to have it there, and, and that is basically used for any major, any major emergency or issue.
This, this is directly as a result of the decrease from level two to level one.
Okay.
But, and what cir- I'm sorry, just what circumstances can that contingency be used if necessary, is what I'm trying to say? Does it have to always be that, and it can't be touched for?
No, it could be used for anything that is, is, is a need, typically, we would use it for a capital improvement, or, uh, if there's an emergency that needs to be taken care of.
Sure.
That's what it would typically be used for, um, it's for whatever's, uh, if there's not enough funds in, in an account, and, you know, let's say we budget for, uh, you know, e- eight thousand dollars worth of repairs for the, for the maintenance of one of the gatearms. And that one, uh, breaks down entirely, and we have to replace the whole thing, we would probably look towards the cap- the contingency to replace it because of the.
And where does the cost for the actual, uh, vote come from? What line item does the vote come from, for example, we want to make a decision, let's say, we're, we're, we want to vote on a, a change, where does that money come from, what line item does that money come from, to make that vote, that HOA type of vote?
What line item does the, does the?
The cost come to vote, to send it to vote, for example, the STD, we want, they want to do something, we want to vote on it, we send it out to them, where does that money come?
We don't currently have a, a line item for.
We have to create the line item.
We would have to create a line item, if you wanted to make an annual budgetary figure for, to have as a, as a, as a placeholder in case we need to vote for anything, you would create a, a budget line item, otherwise.
From their budget, from their current budget.
Correct, otherwise, you could just, uh, on an annual basis, whenever needed, take it from the contingency reserve.
So, if there's something that costs two thousand dollars, and the vote, to, to put out the vote might cost twenty-five hundred dollars, is that, i- is that a possibility? Yes. Okay, that doesn't make any sense to me.
Um, you answered his question, but not mine, um, twenty tha- twenty-nine thousand dollars was, was the line item for contingency this year on, on one of the STDs. What, what was it last year, and how much of it was actually spent? Was there, was the full line item used such that there's no carryover?
Uh, I believe there, I, I, this would be a budget question for Melissa?
Yeah, and, and I actually whispered that to, to.
I'm trying to answer it the best way I can for you, um, I don't have the exact numbers, but I would say that it would, i- if it's not used, it would carry forward.
Okay, because my, my understanding, and, and I do have the, the HOA background, uh, for, for, for me, contingency is for emergencies and, and maintenance, fixing things, uh, or because HOA boards have so much power, whatever they say that they want to use it for, but primarily for emergencies, and if it's a last resort to touch it, i- if you don't have to, uh, so, generally speaking, in my mind, there should be, unless I'm constantly hearing about ACs breaking, and windows breaking, and roof, roofs caving in, in these guardhouses, we should have a pretty substantial carryforward on all of these, uh, STDs.
I'll give you an example of when we had to utilize it, so, when we switched over from Kent to SFM for Lock Lomond, there, there was a price difference between contracts, so we had to utilize the full amount of their contingency to be able to cover the switch from Kent to Lock Lomond, so that would be a reason to go ahead and utilize it.
Of the accumulated contingency or of the annual contingency?
Of their annual contingency.
Yeah, no, I, I think that my question, you're right, i- i- it's, it's a Melissa question, uh, so, so I'll just bring it up to her, you know, offline. Um, aside from that, anyone have comments, questions, uh, for the staff or for the public, uh, with regard to any of the other, uh, potential enhancements?
Mayor, I do apologize that I couldn't answer your question.
Listen, at, at least you didn't make it up. Any other questions? Um, any additional public comments or anything like that, and, you know, I know that we have a very set agenda, uh, but I, I do try to run these, I do try to run these a little bit more laissez-faire, so that we can have the most, uh, efficient exchange as possible, so that everyone can get a word in, so, uh, Ms. Irene? Name and address once again for the record, please.
Not really, no, eighty-twenty-five Northwest One-Sixty-Two Street in Royal Oaks. Um, I was just speaking to Marilyn about the voting for the awnings, it's going to cost us more, oh, okay, the intimidating thing. Um, I was just speaking to Marilyn about the voting for the awnings, it's going to cost us more, oh, okay, the intimidating thing. Uh, it's going to cost us more for the mailing, and at the end of the day, how many people really take the time to vote? You're going to have a very low turnout, if we ever did put the awning, it's going to cost us double of what it really would, because it's the mailing of two thousand some odd dollars. Plus, I think that the the awning was more or less that, right? Two, three thousand, more or less?
Yeah, per.
Per guardhouse.
Per guardhouse.
So, at the end of the day, that's that's what I was going to say, and with in in regards to the infrared photo switch. This would allow us to comply with the twenty four seven ordinance of the security guard in the house, that's all I have to say.
That that last comment was in regard to the infrared.
Infrared, yes, that that would allow us to comply with the with the ordinance, thank you, thank you all.
Yeah, if.
Comment from uh, Councilman Hersberg and then.
I just want to get your your guys' feelings, the the infrared, uh, and that's an improvement of the gate. We're not adding a new gate, we're modernizing the gate, like, we're making it work better. I I I want to get your guys' feelings, if anyone believes that's a capital improvement, because I think that's an, that's a very easy improvement we can make. Not increasing the current assessment rates that were provided, reducing the conti- contingency a little bit, and even. Maybe providing some even lower assessment rates, if we, I look at um. Giving a five percent flat contingency on all the all the districts.
Councilman Fernandez, uh, was your point directly related or?
Directly related.
Okay, then go ahead.
Through the vice, thank you, Vice Mayor, um, I I agree with you, I think that I um, I would agree that it's not a a capital. That it's, it really goes to the original ordinance. For them setting up the guard, you know, the guard gate and and the security for that area.
Right, be- because when the guards aren't there, the gates up.
And and that's not what the original intention was, it was twenty four hours. And I'm not trying to skate around, like, trying to sneak around, I think that was the original intention, so I think that we're doing them a disservice if we don't provide that. So that's, that's it.
My two cents, A, yes, uh, I I think that. It is a capital improvement under the current um, iteration of how the council in the past has defined. Um, a capital improvement, that being said, this council has the power to change that. Um, I would advise extreme caution in doing so, because. I do believe that that was put up as a countermeasure, because in the past, these STDs were treated. Almost as second class, uh, they were made to bear the brunt of the the LPRs. Without any notice, without any um, ability to vote, things were just added to their budget. With no care in the world as to how it affected their tax bill, that is why, it it was a reaction. Frankly, and all the respect, you know how much, you know, uh, not only do do I respect you, but also. Uh, we we share uh, beliefs a a lot, um, but I do think that that was an ex- a bit of an extreme move. But it was an extreme move in reaction to extreme actions being taken on this dais. That being said, I also don't think that it should be relaxed to the point where a future council could then just repeat the cycle. Um, I I think that under the current admin- uh, version of the ordinance, it is a capital improvement. That doesn't mean that we cannot change what it means to something that serves our residents, but also gives us the ability. To serve the residents, uh, without needing to incur ridiculous expenses um, over something that's a minor addition. Uh, Councilman Garcia?
Yeah, just, I'd love to hear the town ma- town attorney. Lorenzo, the, uh, yeah, so the the arm, it's part of the original. Yeah, we're just improving the technology of the arm, is that, do you consider that a capital improvement under the new ordinance that we passed? Same mechanism?
I I don't, I don't have the ordinance in front of me, no, I understand that the ordinance has, the the way it was previously passed, right? And the way it exists, has a a numerical component to it, right? So depends what the numerical value is, and then it might be considered a capital improvement. You you know, a- and this is a conversation I've had with many of you, uh. The way that you treat each of these ordinances, and and something that, uh, in O'Kendall. The the council was just asking me, he's like, can we treat each of these as separate ordinances? Actually, yes, they're all each a different ordinance. Each of the special taxing districts is was 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 created by a separate ordinance. The Lock Lomond ordinance is not the same one as the Royal Oaks, it's not the same one as the Section One, they're a little different, and so you got to read each of them separately. Uh, some of them require a sentinel guard gate, sentinel guard gate means someone is there in the guard gate and is providing twenty four seven service. Um, can you improve those guard gates by technology? E- probably you could, and and it depends, and you got to read it, you know, you know, ordinance by ordinance, section by section. And depends on on what the ordinance says, uh, at at the end of the day, this body, and when I say this body is the council, the mayor. Is the um, ultimate deciding uh, body as to what that ordinance says and how to interpret that ordinance, that's what Florida law says. So can you improve it? It it depends on the policy that you want to push forward, now you have created a separate ordinance. That was pushed forward by Vice Mayor Moreira, that has really strict provisions on how, it's very prescriptive on how you're going to make these improvements, so. We'd have to look back on that and 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 see how that's going to impact your your decisions, now, I and 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 again, but. That ordinance could also be changed, that's that's kind of my answer.
I appreciate that, uh, I just, my two cents, guys, is, I mean, if we're, if something is common sense. And we are, we want the residents to give us their opinion. But if if that process is is slo- super cumbersome, slowing us down. And it's going to cost even more than what we, the original intent of this is to improve them, then make sure they're not paying more than they should. Getting the services they deserve, but not having to go through so much. Uh, of a rigmarole to 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 make one small change to something that's common sense, we're just improving the technology. Uh, I think we should consider what the town attorney said and take this tease individually. Because honestly, common sense has to come first, and that's the first step of making an easier process, not only for us, but for the residents, and saving the money. But to, you know, just to improve a a technology that already exists in the guard gate, you know? In the past, you had those, and still, they still do it in North Korea, you have a man pushing down the gate and holding it, we're past that, right? So come on, let's let's not put handcuffs on ourselves and and make it even more, the process even more expensive and onerous, so. I would just, uh, if you, if my colleagues would consider just being a little more flexible when it comes to that, I think the residents would would appreciate us being more efficient. And and that way we can save more money, when it comes to these individual ordinances.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Sanchez.
Okay, so in rebuttal to what you had mentioned earlier about line items that I had mentioned about. A preapproval amount that we would have to go to the residents, instead of doing line item by line item, doing an annual amount of per se three thousand dollars. To Lock Lomond if they stay, as long as we don't pass the three thousand dollars, we wouldn't have to go out to a vote every time that we want to. Add an awning of fifteen hundred dollars. Oh, okay, so it just said like an annual amount, that as as long as we don't go over that amount on an annual basis, not a per item basis. We wouldn't need a vote in that case and save that money. Yeah, yeah?
Yeah, I I I like that idea, um, I I'm confused where the the one penny limitation is, because I don't see anything in the. In the in the petition ordinance about that.
Was that?
I I remember discussions, but I don't remember it in ordinance.
I I don't recall it being in my.
I'm sorry, if I remember correctly, we removed the component of the amount, so that it would apply to any amount. It's not that it specifically says anything above a penny, but because it doesn't speak to the amount, it's absolutely anything. If I remember it correctly, and forgive me if I'm not.
The way I read it, that that might make sense.
I I agree, that's.
That makes sense, okay, perfect. Right, right, it doesn't actually say a penny.
Discussions, uh, but then ultimately, uh, just take take it out so that it wouldn't be a dollar value.
I mean, the person.
Something that this council.
Right, we can always revisit and we have some ideas, I don't think improving the gate guard is a capital improvement regard, I mean, and. Modernizing the gate is a capital improvement regardless of how we read it. So we can discuss that as as with the, when the budget budget coming up, but I do think we should look at. Making it a little bit easier for us to make small, common sense changes, right? And that that makes sense.
I'm sorry, I ju- I just want to clarify, uh, based on what uh, former council member was saying. Uh, the language, the exact language is, first is to cap reserves for all special taxing districts at no more than ten percent of their annual budget. Second is to require feedback from community by way of straw ballot or any other mechanism staff sees fit. For any capital improvements to be added to the special taxing districts, excluding repairs, maintenance. Of items that already exist or replacement of damaged items that already exist. Third is a requirement of a straw ballot or community expenditure, uh, community feedback of any expenditure that exceeds. Uh, more than ten percent of the special taxing district's budget. So that's the exact lan- language that was voted on.
What are, what are, what, where are you reading that?
From uh, the ordinance for capital improvements, from.
From twenty twenty four?
I'll get you the exact uh, or ordinance, I'm working with Alexis to to get that information.
Okay.
But that is from twenty twenty three.
Okay, yeah, but we have a twenty twenty four ordinance, ordinance as well from from the vice mayor, so. I, we got to look at the two and see what's conflicting, what's not, well, okay, got it.
We we can get back to you on that.
Mister Deputy Clerk, can I have an email with uh, my with my ordinance? And then whenever we find it, that twenty twenty three version of the ordinance, please, looks like I have homework. Please send it to my colleagues as well. Alright, anything else, any other discussion on any of these, um, I think overall, these are. I I'm in favor of all of these items, subject to, you know, approval from the residents, um. You know, and and or a changing of the ordinance, which of course would require. Uh, you know, uh, being moved, seconded, and, you know, going through. Uh, two separate readings, uh, and a public hearing, so, um, it would give plenty of time, as we said before, to. Give residents the time to come in here and scream at us, um, so, so I I, I would also. Uh, be in support of something of a measure like that, depending on what actually ends up getting worked out. Um, the. The only thing I'll say is, um, a departing note to Patrick is, again, just. I really want to say thank you for for implementing the ordinance and and for doing it the right way. Uh, you know, I, by no means am I trying to shut down uh, your your petition, I just want to make sure. That we're not s- uh, substituting our opinions for the opinions of the residents of Lock Lomond, which no one up here is. Uh, so I want it to be your your voice that's being heard, not ours, uh, so, you know, get out there and and come back to us. I it shouldn't be hard, you you have a lot of politically involved residents in there, so so I'm sure it's not going to be that hard, uh, any other? Of course. Of course, uh, any other comments, questions, concerns, uh, hearing none, uh, this workshop is adjourned. Thank you very much.